Monday, July 24, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selectment Meeting. As you can tell, we have Selectman Zager. He's remote today, so because of that, I have to read this, the governor's order here. That allows us to have a remote participant in the meeting. So this meeting will be available for in-person attendance on Zoom. And on Zoom, on March 29, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board Selectment will be conducted in person as well via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found in the Town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: Download Zoom and enter the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the Mass site, uh, meeting ID listed below, or by going to a link and entering the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public body can actively access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So as this mentions, this meeting will be available on the town's YouTube page. We will be doing roll call votes tonight, so don't let anyone forget to do that. Sometimes we do. All right. So with that, I'll jump into Agenda Item 1. So this is for meeting minutes, um, the open session minutes for 7:10, 2023. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 7:10, 2023.
Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jared. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, now we have a presentation from GCC Associates for the existing conditions slash master plan for the Chase Road and Memorial Drive campus. So please come forward.
Yep, I'm gonna give you mine. Negated itself, it was there.
Went to sleep. Okay. For the record, my name is Mike Carter from GCG Associates. We were hired by the town to, um, provide a existing conditions plan of six parcels of land located in this complex that we're standing in, which is basically between Chase Road and Bullock Road. If you're looking at the plan up on the screen, the road on top is Chase Road, and then the road running kind of diagonally from the top left corner down is Bullock Road. And in the middle, you can see Memorial Drive. What you're looking at is an aerial photo of the, um, of the parcel of lands. There's six parcels total, um, that we looked at. And, um, basically, if you could, can you see my mouse on the screen?
Yep.
Okay. You all know this, but this is, um, this is the fire station over here. These are the ball fields, school, police station where we are, and the, I believe it's called the community center in this location, and storage area for down at the DPW. What we did is first, we flew the, we actually flew the, um, the site with a drone. So this is actually pretty, when you zoom in on it, you can see, you can read the sewer manhole covers or, and things, it's pretty, and that's available to you at the end of this, at any time, actually. And it kind of helps us to distinguish, you might look in the bottom right corner and you see a area that's, um, white or black. That's just because there's a heavy, heavy, how does that keep coming up? There's heavy, um, evergreen trees in that area, so the image just can't pick out what's on the ground in that area. But, so what we did is we, um, one of the things that we did was we flagged the wetlands. If you look on the screen that you see, you'll see there's blue lines down behind the fire station that wrap around up to the ball field, if you're following my mouse, and then go back around and want meander out towards Chase Road. Those have been flagged. We're in the process of filing an ANRAD, uh, determination of the line. There's another line over here on the right side that is, um, wetlands. Basically, the blue line in this location. There's some other lines that are up closer to the road. So we flagged those. And then what we did is we did, with assistance of the town, we tried to get as many documents as we could to see where the septic systems were, where the wells are, um, et cetera. And then what we did is we put those on a plan. I'll just jump to the screen. It's actually the plans that we've submitted to you. Not so color, but if you look, you'll see that here's the wetlands here. Here's a fire station. What we did is we set a 100-foot buffer, which is the wetlands, under the Wetlands Protection Act, that's the limit. And that doesn't mean that you can't build in there inside the 100, but we started out and said, okay, where can we definitely build without having to go through any permit process or impact any public water supplies or septic systems? So that, this line here is 100 foot to give you an idea. And then what with the ball fields, there's a, um, there's an agreement. There's a, this little dash line right here, there's a restrictive agreement on the ball field, so you can't really build in that area based upon the agreement. For future development is basically what we're doing here, as I think you all know. Here's the community center over in this area. Memorial Drive is cutting across the middle. And we have the school in this location. And one of the things, and what we've also done on here is we've located, um, your wells. If you look at the school, just give me a sec. Like the school's well is located right here, back behind there. It's a, it's considered a public water supply because it provides water to the public. And it has what is called a, um, protected area. And if you follow my mouse, this is a 500-foot radius around the well. And it continues all the way around. But basically, what happens is in this area here, behind the school, which is basically upland, could be potentially developed well, it's, um, has restrictions on it because it's a public water supply. Now, the 500-foot dimension is the maximum. You could go through a hydraulic, hydrogeological study and shrink that if you wanted to look at increasing that. That's, that's, was well beyond the scope of this project, but that's, if you go on the MassGASDEP website, MassGAS website, um, you'll see that that well's on it. We located it physically, then we just drew a 100-foot circle around it. So that restricts you from building in this area. Or at least, I shouldn't say, you'd have to go further down the road to determine how close you can get to the well. And someone might say, well, how come I can have the school there and the wells there? Well, I'm not sure of the timing of when it all happened, but
Yeah.
Today's status. So that's good restriction. If you hear, over here on Bullock Road, you can see these red dots. Actually, they're not red on this one, but they're, this is a wetland. I'm sorry. Thank you. Police chief, this is a wetland area, so it has a 100-foot restriction that goes around and wraps around like this. Then the storage area in the DPW yard, basically, you see there's wetlands back there that, um, that are resource area. And you can see that, you know, you're encroaching inside the 100 feet, but that's been going on for a long time, I'm sure. It's not anything surprising. And then, so what we did is we took the 100-foot, and in any restrictions for septic systems, there's a septic system, we believe, over here. We didn't have a lot of information on septic. We weren't able to obtain a lot of that. The Board of Health is really helpful, but it's, it's kind of not a lot of information. So what we did is then we shaded areas that could be developed without any permitting. And then basically, if you look in this area, here's a, it's really irregular, this, this area, this gray shaded area where you could develop. And you can obviously develop in the areas that you already have buildings on and structures on. For example, you can, you could build, develop in this area, but we're just showing you the additional areas that are not developed, that you could develop.
Where is that off of Snuggles Way, sir?
Where's that what?
Off of the Highway Department. That's what I'm curious, because my, my property abuts the Highway Department and the school department.
Maybe I should just finish the presentation and let the chairman know. And then over in this area, here's the community center, the ball fields, there's a, there's a substantial area back in here. Kind of, pretty much anywhere out here, you could develop the land. Over here, there's a skinny strip along Bullock, kind of like the fire station, which you probably did with that. There's wetlands behind it, and you, you know, you basically shoehorned the fire station in between the road and the wetlands. So that's kind of a real general overview. I certainly can entertain any questions from you and the public if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just surprised, it's a lot less developable land than I expected.
Yeah. The well really does, puts a big restriction on you.
Yeah, I think I was surprised as well when we finally got the plan of, with 92 acres, I think we really don't have a ton of, um, you know, remaining buildable land. Which I, I would suspect, because you don't realize what those no-touch zones around the public water supply, even though it's, looks like it's available, it's not available.
Yeah.
So it's just a, gives us a good beginning point. Some of the grants we're working on, the library grant requires us to show two possible locations that we could build a new library. So this, this satisfies that, because there are two locations. But it also just lets us, you know, plan as we move forward with what we know we're gonna need future buildings for.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
I have a question too. How, how hard do you see it to be to, um, approach on that 500-foot buffer? I guess, you know, where I think of, between the elementary school and the police station, seems like it's a pretty good distance off. And I just wasn't sure if that would be a hard location to put in and exist another building.
Some of my experience, I've done these before, where I've done the zone, you know, you're basically, you know, you probably could go down from, please don't hold me to this.
Oh, I understand, just.
You could probably get down to about a 300-foot radius if you went through the, the study purpose.
But I'm assuming that's probably not pretty costly to do as well.
Yeah, that's, it's not a, just, it's a, it's a process that you have to go through with the DEP. You know, I'll give you an example, you know, I had a well in Hanson, or actually the town had a well, and they didn't have this done at the time. And there was this 500-foot restriction. And I had a housing authority where there was a septic system that was in a zone too, which is what these are. And they put in this small treatment plant. Well, if system failed, then guess what? They had done this study. And all of a sudden, I didn't need to do the treat, I'm like, why do we have this here? And, you know, it shrunk some, yeah. These are very, that's a very conservative area. So you certainly could increase your area substantially, I think.
That's, that's good information, thank you.
Can I ask that question, though?
Yeah, so was?
My property actually abuts the Highway Department and the school zone. So where are we exactly talking, what are you talking about? I'm on, I'm on Snuggles Way, which is now Tosh's Lane. And it directly abuts the Highway Department and the schools, back to the school zone. That's where I'm confused on where you're, you're showing you want to develop it.
No, no, he's shown that there's wetlands. So you're, you're in this school area right here, that's where your property would be.
Okay, so that blue area is mine.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's yours all, all of it, but their property's that way direction, correct.
Yeah, I got 78.
So we stayed away from that part.
Okay.
That's the goal.
That's where I'm confused, because I'm building a house back there right now, actually. We're in the process of building a house, right? I can see the Highway Department from the back, right where I'm building. I have my, already my septic system approved. Basically, we're building right back there. So I don't know if you guys don't have something up to date or what's going on, but I am building probably within 400 to 500 feet of that Highway Department and that school zone.
Well, the only restriction, like he was saying, was around the public waterway, which is behind the school within 500 feet. He shaded it in to let you know this is where we have to stay away from. All right. So if you, like he also said, he's working with the health and the permitting department to make sure he's got everything up to speed, up to date, to give us this information. So if you're already building, I think you're covered.
And, and there is, and it's probably gonna surprise everybody here, there is a road back there that is claimed by others that you're not gonna see on the map. There's a, a road that years ago was claimed by others.
Which is the, this is just a map of Free Town owned land. This is not anybody else's. This is just the Town of Free Town.
But from the school department on Bullock Road right down through, there is a road that's claimed by others in, in there. And I have it actually on a map.
So, so the right-hand side of the sheet, that line, it's straight up and down, that's your property line. So you, you're, you're not even on this plan, you're way off to the right.
Perfect.
I'm satisfied with that. I just, you know.
No, we get it.
It's out my kitchen window, the truck driver's coming by, you know?
Well, now we know, now we know where our options are.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for the work, we really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. All right, so now we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 3. This is discussion of vote, Pirates Way Improvement, proposed by Zanetti's Family LTD, partnership number one, regarding the property identified as such as map 240 parcels 86 and 87. I know we have some folks here regarding this issue, I think we have.
Trevor, hold on one second, please. I'm gonna have to accuse myself, unfortunately, from this discussion. So, um, just, I would just ask to wait until they give me the okay, then I'm out of.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
He's out.
He's out. All right, thank you. Okay, thanks for joining us. I know that, so we have an attorney on?
Correct, Attorney Stein is on.
Okay.
I'm here.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, so I know that, you know, where we last kind of left off this conversation, I know you guys are doing some fact-finding and getting some, um, some documents over to Town Council. I guess, I mean, was there anything else submitted from the, the Butters? Okay, also went to Town Council? Okay.
It went to DEP, and DEP was voting it.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess, so, so how should we do this? You think we should get a statement from, um, our attorney, see where, where we stand here?
Yes, I mean, you reviewed the letters
Yeah.
from, um, the applicant's attorney, with their opinion that it's a private way, correct?
Correct.
So, um, and I believe that's been the Butters' claim, is that it's a private way. Am I correct?
It's not, it's not a private way.
We, we own that property.
Up to the central line.
We own to the central line.
Up to the central line.
Right, which means it would be a private way.
Right, okay.
So I think that's where we're at, is that everybody believes that it's a private way. Certainly, I've sent this to the Town Council, and you can, you can have Attorney Stein give us her opinion as to how the town should handle this. Are you there, Attorney Stein?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great. You wanna give us your opinion, how this, how your thoughts are after reviewing what information we've gotten?
So it's my understanding that the Select Board's original vote was based on the premise that this is a public way. And now it looks like from all the documentation submitted, that it's actually a private way. And so my recommendation would be that the Select Board consider rescinding its original vote, which was based on the Select Board controlling public ways within the town. And then the applicant would be free to make a proposal or investigate the appropriate process for improving a private way, which I anticipate is likely to involve the Planning Board, but certainly, um, the Building Department.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah, so I guess, I don't know if you folks wanna, you know, does that sound reasonable for what you're expecting here? I mean, I'll let you guys speak in a moment as well. This is the first situation of this nature I've had to deal with, so trying to figure this out.
So when you have a private way, basically, we go to the Planning Board, we ask the Planning Board, um, we already have a design, we can show them the design, get their approval, and go to the Board of Health and the Building Department to get approval to build a house.
Okay.
So that would be the process that we will take.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Anything else?
So the reason for the, the letter is obviously we couldn't find anything in the 1700s or 1800s, uh, town warrants.
Yeah.
But that, I'm still skeptical, obviously, but we do have a letter stating that I think the majority of the roads that we use in town, you won't find it either. So it's, I guess this is the best-case scenario, that we have Town Council agreeing with it, and our lawyer saying that, just simply because we can't find it. But I just wanted to mention that, you know, no one's paid taxes on that since its start. And it's just, because we can't find it in 300-year-old books, it's just difficult to say. So I apologize for saying that at the beginning, however, I think you guys can understand my confusion.
It's a confusing situation. So I mean, I think that everyone, I, I'm.
Yeah, it's been many hours from all sides to make sure that this is looked at properly and reviewed properly, and moving forward, it's properly. At the time, we, we had the information we had, and then more individuals came forward, more information that added to the conversation, and here we are today, so.
I thought we were looking forward to it, move forward properly.
Probably.
Very educational.
Which is a way that people say, if something's said to be stopped and not done, it's stopped and not done. This is how I ended up in this situation.
All right, it, it, if you're gonna, just for the minutes, if you don't mind, just if you're gonna talk.
Of course.
Okay, all right. So, um, so I guess that's the path forward here, right? It's just going through the Planning Board and, um, you know, checking all those boxes. If, if anyone wants to speak, yeah, just grab that microphone, if you don't mind, just so, since we are on the.
One behind you as well.
Yeah, and just state your name for the record, please, if you don't mind.
Donna Zatano, 191 Chase Road.
Thank you.
If this is gonna go before the Planning Board, obviously, it'll be following all of the protocol from the Planning Board. All of us as a Butters will be notified of all Planning Board meetings and so forth.
That's correct.
Correct. And then you said something about Board of Health, Building Inspector. I believe that's what you said initially, DeP.
Board and, Board of Health and Building Inspector?
He said, I think, he said something about Board of Health, because I was writing it down.
Well, when you go for a building permit, they will have to get permits from both of those departments. So Board of Health for your septic, and Building for your building. So yes, you'll have to go before both of those.
Same process you went through when you went, when you were property and everything else, not too long ago, so.
Right, right, but he was going through his own property.
Yes.
And just like we did one, and we went through our own property, this isn't their property. This is a private way owned by a Butters. So I just, I'm like, I'm just curious how the Planning Board even handles that. Not that you can maybe even speak to it, but.
Yeah, and I, I think that's another, and I don't know if Attorney Stein could weigh in, who actually owns it will be another discussion, I think. Once it's been determined by the town that it's a private way, then that's sort of out of the Selectmen's purview. Attorney Stein, do you, do you have an opinion as to that?
I, I think you're correct. I mean, the town's not, the town doesn't normally get involved in questions of ownership of private ways. I'm assuming if an application is made to the Planning Board, it's gonna attain the necessary, you know, documentation. But, um, you know, if there's a dispute over the ownership, that ultimately would likely be initial court would resolve, not the town.
Yes, it, basically, it's gone to the Supreme Court already. There's many, many cases where the Butters eventually, and even the Zatanos and the Leachers have a, uh, even more ability to do stuff. They can actually apply for a deed of that property. It's a, it's a pricey thing to do it, but they can actually even apply on a deed to acquisition that property, just like we can. After the 21-year period, if, if nobody's done nothing, and that's the way it goes, it's, you know what I mean, the Butters own it, and that's what it comes down to, you know, and.
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. If, if, for the record, can you just state your name?
Yeah, I'm a regular plant, and I, I bought it, and it's just, it's something where, it's, it's, it's our heaven, it's our backyard, and we've been, you know what I mean, our horses ride back there. It's, and basically, and if you read deeper into it, it says on that road, the Butters, as long as you have frontage, 175 feet of frontage town property, that's the only way you can, the Butters can obtain that 33 feet we're talking about between the two. So it only appears, pains to, uh, pains to certain people if you have that frontage then. But if you don't have that, it's, it's just, it's a sticky situation, like you said, you know what I mean?
And that's why it's gonna go through all the appropriate boards, you know.
And as far as we are, we're gonna raise our hand and say, we claim that as our property, all of us. That's our property, and we'll go from there.
Like our attorney said, there's many claims to that same parcel of land, and eventually, that's gonna be a discussion that needs to be had. The town's really out of it. We're here making sure that whatever's put there is done properly through the proper boards, so that, I believe that's what everybody, whatever intention at the beginning it was, I think we'd all agree, no one was, at least that's how I look at it, whether I'm even not, nobody was trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. It was perceived, but I, I, like I said.
I was planning to talk to you after the meeting.
Nope, like I said, I think we're all trying to do the right thing, and that's, and here we are, doing the same thing.
I'm Wade Zatano, but if you, if you look at the recordings of the meetings, you'll see what we always said, we wanted to do it the right way, through the Planning Board. If it's done, if it's done, if it's done one way, the right way, which we all had to go through.
I assure you, we all looked at meeting minutes prior to this to make sure we were fresh on what I, what I last time.
And so. Nothing for doing, just sit and think.
And so there needs to be a vote right now by the Selectmen to rescind your vote from that original decision, am I correct?
That is one of the things we will add to the items.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if we have the exact vote, like, uh, the exact language that we need for that. We could do it right now, or we could do it, sorry, yeah.
I just, I just had one more thing. So I know the Planning Board was brought up the proper channels, but I'm not quite sure what application I fill out and what standards they're looking at for a one-law subdivision on a, uh, public way. We have subdivision control laws, this is not a subdivision. Not changing any property lines or anything like that. So it's just clarification on that somehow.
Like what bucket does this fall into, right, like?
Well, my, right, because reading the bylaws several times, I didn't find a bucket.
Yeah.
Now, happily, go, I already said we'll go to the Planning Board.
Yeah.
But I mean, we'd be looking for, um, the recommendation from Chuckie, that's what we'll submit to the Planning Board.
Nope, Chuck has nothing to look at.
Can we?
Yeah.
Let them talk.
Yeah.
So that, that's my only concern. There's no real list to follow here. So I don't know if, um, Town Council has a recommendation or anything like that. I just wanted to make sure we go through this once. I mean, that, that's the only thing.
That's very fair, yeah. Attorney Stein, do, so maybe some direction here on next steps, being that this doesn't fall necessarily into anything that is described in our bylaws of procedures and.
So, I mean, unfortunately, as Town Council, we really can't give legal advice to applicants. But my recommendation is, you know, at least a preliminary and formal conversation with the Building Commissioner about what's necessary to, you know, create frontage. But, you know, I believe that the, um, applicants have counsel, so they probably want to consult with their own counsel about what they need to do. And then, you know, no formal decision would get made through the Building Department without a formal application. So, um, you know, I, I really can't, you know, advise a, a private property owner about how to improve their property.
I, I think the, the big thing for me is it's not owned by an individual either. It's owned by a corporation, which is technically a developer. And we're trying to make it like an individual trying to build a house, and it's not that way. We've already asked the question, are you just gonna build a, a house for yourself? And Matt was told not necessarily. So we, we can't even depend on it just being a single-family house you want to build. You have two lots there, they have no frontage to begin with, it's undeveloped, zoned, and it's, it's just.
I don't, so I, I think this conversation can go off the rails real quickly. And I don't want to make assumptions about whatever, whoever, you know, what, what are we not doing with the house? And that's not really us, for us to discuss here right now, right?
It's a planning board, that's the whole reason.
Yeah, that's just, that's out of the scope of this conversation. Okay, so, um, do, can we just, should we have that vote now? Just to, just, I mean. Get us out of here. It's kind of a null situation, just because it's, you know, come to the conclusion that it is not a public road, so that that vote doesn't really mean anything, I guess, at this point. I still don't know if I have the, the exact language, I probably can get it from.
I'm just trying, I, I don't know that we need the exact language.
Yeah, just, I'll just introduce a motion to, um, rescind the, the previous vote regarding the Pirates Way.
If it helps, I believe you voted May 15th.
Okay, I don't have that right in front of me, but I think.
Jared Zatano, Chase Road, um, I have a question. He brought up Chuck Macumber again. I don't understand what Chuck Macumber has anything to do with any of this.
So.
Can somebody tell me, I mean, other than him being a highway supervisor, what does he have to do with any of this?
So, well, during the original conversation, when the assumption was made, you know,
So well, during the original conversation, when the assumption was made, you know, before, you know, the butters got involved and you you know. We are on the assumption that that was a t- uh a town owned, you know, road. Since he's a highway surveyor, that's kind of where that like, that's where. Supervise, yeah, that's that's where. Right, yeah, right. So, so but that's, I mean, I think that's. Uh, kind of without, you know, this is a a new kind of scenario. And so, you know, we thought it made sense if if to make sure that road would be up to his the standards, right, that, you know, he was, he's an expert in that field. That was that was kind of the logic there.
That could be. I was just wondering why he.
Sure, but but.
I was just wondering why it was in.
Well, Chuck did provide something in writing that to us, we asked him, hey, as the supervisor, what do you need to get, be able to get trucks in there in any event? We needed it. So I believe the. Well, that's they they all talked. It's the same thing. It's essentially we need to get, be able to get a fire truck or ambulance, whatever is down that road safely. And that's and Chuck was, he knows by looking at, well, not by looking, I'm sure he went out there and did some surveying himself. We asked him for his uh his honest opinion, cause he's been here so long. So that's that's why we went to Chuck.
Yeah, so with the planning board getting involved, it will be different because the planning board.
No, it's a it's a valid question. Yes, yes, man. Will we done through the town, visible through the public, everything?
I just wanted to clarify, when I said through Chuck, I meant the letter that we proposed originally had nothing to do with Chuck. It was just a letter. He provided what we originally wanted, that was all. Had nothing to do with Chuck. I just wanted to clarify that.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to rescind the the um approval for the property owners of map two forty parcel eighty six to improve. Proprietors away from Chase Road to their fore um aforementioned lot with the requirement that the highway surveyor approves the plans and support doc um. Supported documentation are included for the record was made by, oh, sorry. That's, I just kept reading that.
Motion made.
Uh, I'll second it. Jared, just cause he's not here. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Usually take a roll call vote, cause you.
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, good luck to everybody going forward.
Have a good night.
Well, see, you guys can stay if you want.
We've been to watch.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
We've moved on, I'm sorry.
If you can email the town, we'll we'll look at it.
Is this lady serious? She just accused me of uh. Alright. Okay. So moving on, so now we have uh agenda four. Oh, yeah, Jared's back. Which is uh Town Administrator to negotiate with best qualified firm for the design services for Fire Station number three. Renovation construction within the financial parameters set by, set forth by the Fire Station Building Subcommittee. And move to the next qualified firm if necessary. Want to explain this one a little bit?
Yeah, so we, you know, the um Fire Station Building Subcommittee put out uh for an RFQ. For an engineering architect firm to design the addition. We interviewed them all. We came up with a ranking order of them, but. We are, I am in the process of negotiating with the 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 firm that we we think, you know, we'd like to go with, but. Within the Subcommittee, Building Subcommittee meeting, we voted for cap on how much we could spend. So we're still negotiating the details and we haven't come to an agreement yet, but in order not to hinder the process. Um, I just wanted the the board to vote for me to continue and if. If we can't come to agreement with this uh firm, the process is we go to the next firm that was ranked number two by the uh committee. So basically just solidifying that that's the process and that you're okay with me and and Harry, uh the fire chief will be with me to negotiate. And as well as the OPM is involved in that. And then give me the permission in the next um agenda item to. Uh, you know, uh solidify the contract.
That makes sense. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Town Administrator to negotiate with the best qualified firm for the design services for design station, Fire Station number three. Renovation slash construction within the financial parameters set forth by, set by the Fire Station Building Subcommittee. And move to the next qualified firm if necessary.
Second.
All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and then just continuing on that, uh entertain a motion to um to approve the Town Administrator to sign off on the contract for design services for Fire Station three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. This is just the uh to acknowledge the reserve fund transfer request from uh building in the amount of twenty three thousand dollars for town prop R and M service. Service buildings and grounds for the police station, I'm assuming here. I did see this. Alright, so yeah, repair bills, the overall budget was twenty one thousand five hundred ninety five and there are some outstanding bills. Alright, so I don't, there's no vote there, right? It has been acknowledged. Alright, next is ambulance abatements and write offs for June. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements and write offs for June twenty twenty three in the amount of one thousand, one hundred fifty eight, eight thousand six hundred sixty six dollars and eighty six cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. So the HVAC preventative maintenance, so I saw that, oh, what what is it, like fourteen thousand or?
Fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Sounds right. Which seems expensive, but also the the alternative is more expensive. We don't take care of this building, it's going to fall apart and costs us a lot of money. So um.
I don't think you realize the um, I didn't realize how complicated the system is. I thought it was crazy too, until you realize this thirty eight. Um, thirty eight mini splits here that all need to have uh balance, their filters changed twice a year. Plus they they have certain things that need to be tested, so it's very, very complicated and we need to. This this was actually the least expensive contract for that.
Yeah, and I want like. You know, I was getting this kind of maintenance. It doesn't provide any additional warranty or anything, does it?
No, it just keeps the filters changed and they'll check them and that way hopefully we. Can alleviate things going wrong with the system.
Alright, well, this seems like the right path forward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to um award the HVAC. The HVAC preventative maintenance um contract to Advance Heat Air and Heat Company.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and uh continuation of that. So this is for the contracts. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Freetown and Advance Air and Heat Company.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, moving on, we have the MOU between the Town of Freetown and Mastah for Safe Roots and School Program.
This is a grant that we received. This is just a um. An update to the contract to keep it going. It's a it's a multi-year grant.
Alright, awesome. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memo memorandum of understanding between the Town of Freetown and Mastah. For Safe Roots to School Program.
Motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and then my favorite subject.
Yes.
This is for the Agreement for Engineering and Supplemental Services in Connection with the ASONIT Sewer Extension Design and Permitting. And it looks like, so we also got a grant for a lot of this.
Yes, uh.
Well.
This is um a combination of Mass Works grant and the amount of seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And two hundred thousand dollars of opera grant monies.
Yeah, awesome. Alright, so. The agreement calls for, so there's like three different tasks here. I mean, there's a lot going on here.
Oh, there's an extensive, eh, this is an extensive design and engineering um project. It's probably gonna take. I would say into two thousand and twenty six, where they first gonna survey everything and then um. They're gonna do test borings as well to see what kind of soils and what they're gonna run into on the side of the road on Main Street running from. Uh, the existing sewer line up by um stop and trap all the way down to the four corners. And they have to, you know, uh identify what properties they're gonna go under. What might be in their way, all the other utilities, and then there's permitting for conservation, uh different um. And different subsidies, ma- you know, the highway, it runs there with the overpass, so they have to get permits from. Mastioti, so it's pretty extensive. We have to design the pump station. So there's quite a bit of work involved in this. Um, I'm happy to finally get it moving because it required federal procurement. And that took a little bit of time. So I'm excited to actually move this forward. I think probably o- other than the contract, the one thing that um. Conversation I would like to have in the future is whether we have a sewer, like a a a Subcommittee for the Sewer Line. Or, and I need to have this conversation with the sewer commissioners to see what, how they feel about that. And then we might bring this back to the board.
Alright.
This is such a, if all goes right, you know, all the crystal balls in the world, and you know, this will do a lot for this this small town.
Hundred percent.
A lot. This is a very important event getting this far, so yeah, let's do this. This is.
The other thing I just wanna mention, cause it's a concern for a lot of people, is that um this is just a permitting phase and. I I I understand it's gonna be extremely expensive to put in the sewer line and I will be working diligently to get grants in order to do the actual construction. So this is not something that we would be looking necessarily for the town to fund out of tax dollars, but out of grant monies. So that's important to know, cause people ask me that all the time, so uh we know that it's a, it's a, you know, inexpensive. And we're looking to phase it so that we can do it with grants one phase at a time.
Hundred percent.
I just wanna put that out there, that this is not something that we'll be necessarily coming back to the town and saying we need ten million dollars for the sewer line.
Yeah. No, I I get it. But I mean, I think that this is something, we're getting ahead of, you know. A lot of issues when septic start failing and we can't, you know, then what do we do, right? We'd rather kind of ha- have all our ducks in a row and. And also, I I'm a big believer that this will definitely, you know, bring more small businesses into town and um, you know, just really.
Especially with the um MBTA zoning requirements that the state is um suggesting that we adopt. With uh high densities, this will make that um, you know, around the MBTA station available to to do. Cause right now we can't do it with the infrastructure we have.
I think this is great. I just do wanna say that, um I do think that we should have a Subcommittee, cause I think that. You know, obviously, I know you said water and sewage commission need to agree with that. I just think that having some different outlooks from. Uh, community members would be a great thing, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, David, for all your hard work on this.
Oh, you're welcome. I think we will, like I said, that'll be a subject we'll bring up at a subsequent meeting, but if you look at that contract, one of the first things out of the gate. Is that we're gonna have a meeting with planning, conservation, economic development, myself, the sewer commissioners, you know what I mean? So we get all the input right out of the gate and hopefully we can vet what we need to vet. Uh but yeah, Subcommittee might be so that we have all these different. Inputs, you know, miss things.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Agreement for Engineers Engineering and Supplemental Services in Connection. Um, with the ASONIT Sewer Se- Sewer Extension Design and Permitting Process um with environmental partners.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and I will kick it over to Selectman Lopes for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, item agenda number twelve, acknowledge that James Campbell has declined his appointment to the Cable Advisory Board. For fiscal year twenty four, as he no longer resides in Freetown. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Hope we acknowledge your resignation. Alright, item agenda thirteen, discussion and vote on what to approve the conditional offer of full-time employment for Kobe J. Empert. Effective seven twenty four, twenty twenty three through six thirty, twenty twenty four. Alright, so as you know, we've been doing a lot of interviews and these are the the best candidates we uh all suggested. So this is just moving forward with his offer and getting him to work.
Awesome, sounds good.
I am, Jared, you have anything?
No, no, it's great. Thank you.
I entertain the motion to approve the conditional offer of full-time employment for Kobe J. Empert, effective seven twenty four, twenty twenty three through six thirty, twenty twenty four.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright, number i- item agenda fourteen, discussion and vote on to approve the following appointments. I will read them all off and then at the end roll call them all into roll them into one. As we usually do. Alright. We're here to approve the following appointments. A, Susan Mello as part-time senior clerk in Town Clerk's Office, effective seven twenty five, twenty twenty three. Through six thirty, twenty twenty four. B, sorry, Paul, I'm gonna say it wrongly, but I'm gonna try my best. Paula Christian as full-time senior clerk in Planning Conservative Conservation, effective seven twenty five, twenty twenty three. Through six thirty, twenty twenty four. C, Nicole DiMaranville as full-time senior clerk. Sessors Floater, effective seven thirty one, twenty twenty three through six thirty, twenty twenty four. D, election workers as reflected in attachment A, effective eight sixteen, twenty twenty three through eight fifteen, twenty twenty four. Which is provided to us by our town clerk. E, Nicholas A. Mancuso as patrolman, probationary, effective seven twenty four, twenty twenty three through six thirty, twenty twenty four. F, Stephen Tripp, Conservation Commission, effective seven twenty twenty, seven twenty five, twenty twenty three through six thirty, twenty twenty six. Any comments, concerns, especially for Mr. Tripp?
Congratulations, Mr. Tripp.
Congrats. I entertain the motion to approve the appointments as discussed and read, A through F, on today's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Item agenda fifteen, discussion and vote on to approve. Nope, sorry.
I think.
Just in case, let's do it again. Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, you might be right, but I like thought we did.
It's it's a long day.
Thank you, thanks for the catch. Alright, item agenda fifteen, discussion and vote on what to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Carlton E. Abbott Junior. Yes, for those out on the world, yes, that's our former police chief and the agreement here is, is coming on board part-time as needed to. Find any turnover um work or assistance help, however you wanna phrase it, for our our current chief, Scott Rose.
Perfect. You know, I think it's great to have this as a option, right? You know, I mean, it's, it's uh with, you know. Big responsibility and I mean, I know Carlton has a wealth of knowledge.
Yeah, nearly forty years of.
Yeah, so I think it's it's great. I I knew we wouldn't let him get away.
It was the old saying, unless they kept going, we pull you back in. Alright, that's true today. That said, I entertain the motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Carlton E. Abbott Junior. As discussed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, so next we'll be moving on to executive session and we're not going to be returning. Right? Alright, so um with that, so I'm gonna entertain a motion that we go into executive session and do not return back into open session. Okay, yeah, sorry, we'll do sanctions first, yeah.
Congrats, Mr. Tripp. Don't work too hard.
Kind of getting the HVAC business. That elevators, elevator seems to be.
Every one, two years to get inspected. Oh, I need a new police system. Come on down.
Acknowledging the transfer request.
Gotta be safe and sorry.
True.
True.
Abatements for ambulance.
You're gonna have to sign it, yeah. We're gonna have a contract with them.
We did, they just signed.
Yeah, so it's a big goal, but that proposal will become part of the contract.
Just double check, my wife is on that list, I was like, oh.
Okay, all signed? All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session and not return back into open session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes.